Post, motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Finance Administration, Alderman Wesley.
I'll report, Mayor.
Community and Economic Development, Alderman Lewitin.
There'll be no report.
Under other business, may have a motion to approve the addition of Smith Engineering to the city's list of approved engineers and direction for staff to direct CTE to consult with Smith Engineering for the remainder of the grade separation project. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Alderman, please.
I got one question on that. When, uh, Smith Engineering, if they become a subcontractor, so are we gonna get charged from both guys? CTE gonna make a profit on top of SEC?
Mr. Murris?
Um, well, for instance, I'll give you an example. Let's say there's a hundred percent of work that needs to be done. CTE would typically do the hundred percent of work. Now bringing Smith Engineering in, let's say CTE does sixty percent of the work. Uh, Smith would do the remaining forty, so it'd be the same amount of work, just, uh, to different, uh, different companies distribute it out.
The answer is no. Anything further? Alderman, favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Uh, we do need an executive session tonight on the subject of review of the official minutes. Uh, land acquisition and probable litigation pursuant to five ILCS one twenty slash two C twenty-one, two C five, and two C eleven may have a motion to recess the city council to executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Oliver Cole?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Canay?
Yes.
Alderman Cadawa?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
That passes, we'll be back.
What's that? What did I do wrong?
We were paying Frank ninety-eight thousand.
Yeah.
And we're agreeing to start, start this guy at one twenty?
Yeah, yeah.
We're getting there for twenty grand.
I don't know.
Were we getting the twenty grand for that and were we getting the twenty grand for the third?
For who?
For the third. It's forty thousand now, where are we gonna get? It wasn't in the budget.
I take a wish in the budget.
Not for this year, not for this year's budget.
Well, he could, he could reach.
Oh, you're kidding.
He could have reached.
Hi, Jack.
Yeah.
I'm doing wonderful.
Roger, you've got nothing today.
Huh?
You've got nothing. What are you doing?
No, I can't, uh, somebody's gotta be here. No, the department doesn't work anymore.
These are getting done quick.
I don't want you guys to feel lonely.
Before, before it's done, we don't even have it. No question.
Thank you for your consideration, Oliver Cole.
Yeah, he lives in, uh...
Put your hat on, grab your cigar and jump in your car.
I have to leave with Frankie.
Ju- 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 jump in your, jump in your car.
Yeah, no, he's, uh...
Jump in your Chevrolet, you're gonna get, you're gonna get a, uh, police cop pretty soon.
Okay, wait, wait.
No more Chevy Capricis.
I gotta meet with Frankie.
You're gonna meet with Frankie?
Yeah.
Watch out, watch out, he's gonna arrest you.
It'll be the first thing.
About here.
Let's go, let's go get this stuff.
Okay, executive session, here we go. Oh, I need all the rest of this crap.
I know, I...
Yes, I wanted to slap him.
I know.
He was, he was charged.
It was just the best way to handle it.
Well, you know what, I could, you know what, we could do something.
I don't know why we're doing this. Ed? I don't know why we're doing this.
I know, here's the...
And then when she's, and then when they said, well, the guy's...
Where's Sharky?
Yeah.
She never comes when you're doing this.
I know.
Swimming to make shit.
I, I thought about that, but I, you know what I did, I started foot... I know I did. I, I, I thought of that after that.
All right, we're on the same page.
Yeah, I, I know. See, no one will allow it.
Yep. I don't think it's gonna be too long. Take care of guys.
See, Jean.
See, ma'am. So, good evening.
How you doing?
Pretty good, how are you?
Good. You working by your own time?
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Oh, no. Yeah, it's too hard. Yeah.
Early in school.
Yeah.
That sounds fun.
I know, it's pretty boring.
This is your last year?
Yeah.
Are we going to college?
Yep.
Then after that, like, oh, no.
I know, I was gonna stop.
I gotta go on to the real world. Yeah, my niece, uh... Alderman Wesley there? So we're ready to go. Call roll call. We can start without you.
Why?
Why? Cause you're an integral part of this. Yeah, right.
Did she like it?
Yeah, she did, like, all four years. She went down there and she lived off it.
That's her life.
Yeah. She was mad at parking compas too.
Oh, really?
With another girl on her, she had only one special.
Oh, really? Oh, God.
Yeah, yeah. She made it through, she got her, uh, physical therapist and a P...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They make good money?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Yeah, they have a physical therapist.
Yeah. Nothing for, um, in between, probably.
There you go, cause businesses now I can, I can do, pick it up. I've been in, uh, the industry all my life.
Oh, really?
And I just... I work at the Boffort, Open House Boffort. It's really, you pay cash, I work for a mentor there.
Oh, really?
And set up banquet.
Oh, that's cool. That sounds kinda perfect. Good money?
Yeah.
Really?
And plus I used to make, do part-time.
How do you get into that, like, what's your background?
I didn't take no degrees.
Did you go to college or, oh, you did either?
No, I picked it up all natural.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of people have business, I mean, I didn't, I don't have no college education.
Really?
I picked it up natural.
If you didn't get it, if you went to college, what career did you get for that?
I was, uh, like, bus- like, business owner or something.
Oh, really?
See, I know all that stuff.
Yeah.
I picked it up all...
Would you get paid more if you went to college? Oh, really?
Yeah, I wouldn't get much more.
Oh, really?
Right.
Really?
I still, maybe, goes by what I'm...
I really want some more money.
Mm-hmm. Or restaurant management.
Yeah, that's right, I'm seriously thinking of that.
But see, I could go right now.
Yeah.
With all my net, knowledge now, I could get a job in a hotel in the street right now.
Really? Why don't you do that?
I bet you I will.
You like your job though?
I like it, but it's, we've got good days and bad days. But you know what? I could fall in right now and get a, you know, position right now as a manager.
Really? Yeah.
But see, I don't need it, that's a college education. Yeah, it's nice, don't get me wrong, to have a college education. We have more, but see, I picked it up all on my knowledge. Not really, if I'm just working in the industry all my life. I started at Burger King when I was thirteen years old. I worked there for four years. Now I work at my burger restaurant. For twenty-five years I made pizzas and I helped, uh, manage, and I did stuff at the golf course. So I picked it up pretty much all knowledge.
Yeah, well, you, you're not even like thirteen, you start working at a burger?
But that was all part-time, on a part-time basis.
Did that work for you a while?
Fourteen, I could say about fourteen, cause I was enough.
Still young.
Yeah. I'm only making about ten an hour. I think we all realize. And so, uh, they, uh... My first, uh...
I remember the girl, huh?
Mm-hmm. You were getting... But see, with your, your generation now, they will get a lot.
What? Have lunch, you know, all...
See, back then, you know, that was my first gig.
Is there still tons of now though?
Yeah. Having those now, your guys, your gener- uh, your now, your generation, people get like, whoa.
Well, I can't, I can't live on that. Yeah, I know, I was young, that's for sure.
No, but back then was not bad, but now, it's all tough, tougher now. See, like now, I could go to, I eat places right now, you know, food in, food restaurant in the street, or food in the street. I don't pay my price.
Wow, that's pretty cool.
Yeah. But I'll, but I'll, I know, knowledge. But see, I can negotiate.
Into what?
I can negotiate for my price. A lot of people don't, a lot of people can't do that now. Cause you got, if I could go and sit here in a restaurant and come to you and say, I wanna make some money with knowledge, but... Not really.
Well, if someone hired you?
Right, with my knowledge, I can make through business look better.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
Yeah. See, I could be like a, uh, what they call it?
What were you saying?
See, like, you go hit a restaurant, I came up to you and say, I could make your, uh, restaurant better. If you wanna pay for my experience.
Oh, I see, I see.
But you might have to say, well, I can't afford ya.
So like, are you in charge of everyone there?
Not really, but I could tell people what to do.
You're like, you've got to stop. Do you talk with coworkers?
No, no. I just, uh, my coworkers and I would work together. I'm the senior guy here.
Oh, so you set up, so you just like set up for this thing?
Mm-hmm. For like weddings and everything.
Or there's no wedding that day?
I take care of all the stuff during the week, like seminars, like business meetings.
Oh, okay.
And everything. And I set up kind of, uh, practices, like, the coffee stations and everything.
Yeah.
That's not part of my gig.
So then do business management or hotel management or...
Take a look and see what you, you know...
What would they teach me in college, or how they turn us into...
They'll teach you the basic.
Like what? That'd be hard, you'd agree to...
Nah, it'll probably be easier, like, may I ask you, what, what kind of field you like to get into, restaurant industry? Well, I think you would, hotel management. That would be the best way, cause you could make more money.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
See, like, for me, I've, I've picked it up all natural. My first time my boss came up to me and said, here you go, John. That's my, oh, my name's John.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm back in.
I know your mom, right?
Oh, okay, yeah.
She's the reporter. Yeah, I, uh... See, my first time my, my boss came up to me and said, here you go, John, go do the inventory. I never had no knowledge about that. Take this stuff off the truck, uh, the, the counter, everything. I was signing stuff at fifteen, thirty-two hundred dollars for food.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, fifteen years old.
Well, that's good too.
But I do that now. I do the liquor. I do that for the liquor, beer, food and everything comes in. It's, you gotta make sure you're all accurate, cause they'll come back to you.
And the golf, probably, then? Why do you have to come out?
Well, to see how everything's, is all there. No, it's, like, say you order ten cases, I'm absolutely ready to have it instead, uh, on the truck. Cause there's some that could cheat you.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
You gotta be way ahead of the game.
Do you do that, come up to you like...
No, I, that's, uh, the other, uh, food and beverage coordinator, coordinator, that kick inventory.
Yeah.
But I could do that myself, so, still, I still do that. I do that on occasion and count stuff for one of the girls, but I don't have to do that anymore, so... But, but you could, uh, do it in college, but you know what? Try to figure it out nat- natural. Like, this is your only gig?
Yeah.
See, I've been in this, I could, I could do this.
Well, I don't bother you, obviously.
Uh-huh. See, I could do this stuff myself now.
That's good.
I got all, I got this kind of field too.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. Landscaping, setting up TV stuff. See, I could go, you don't know how much knowledge I got, but I told them, I said, you guys wanna put my knowledge, you gotta pay me.
I would, that's, I really would.
By, uh, like a, what they call in the, negotiator.
Oh, yeah?
I could say, okay, you wanna pay for my services, you gotta pay for my services. I'm not doing this for nothing. They look at it like, well, we're gonna pay, uh, we're not gonna pay, I said, sorry. I'm not gonna give out my knowledge. You guys gotta learn around it yourself. I won't.
Yeah, I don't have money.
Mm-hmm. I do all right. But, uh, I never give out my secrets.
Oh, maybe secrets.
I could, see, uh, I could tell you, like, you go always go negotiate a price. And say, well, I pay for my services, I'll tell you my knowledge. I went to Harvard. I didn't go to college for it. I picked it up. I would just tell you, just try it on your own and just say, hey, you know, you could always run out of textbook, but it's always better, it's street smart.
Yeah.
Instead of a textbook.
Yeah.
The textbooks don't tell you that I have that much.
Yeah, I know.
They don't tell you as much as... It's always better known that, not, not your knowledge. See, like now, I, somebody could show me how to work on it, so if I could do it just for a couple days. People don't understand how much, uh, knowledge I have.
Well, I understand.
And you know that, but it's, well, I heard people, oh, let's use him for no- uh, let's use him, but I said, no, they never use me no more.
Oh, yeah.
I had people come up to me and says, hey, and say, oh, we need to have your knowledge. I said, well, cause I pay for my services. Yeah, I gotta make a living.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
And say, hey, wait a minute, I'm sorry, you don't like it?
Do that for the world.
Exactly. Get somebody else to that. Get somebody else to do it. I can't do that, man. And I gotta make money too. It's unfair. See, you hired me as a consultant for your restaurant.
Yeah.
And I'll make your restaurant look good and advertise, do the right thing for you and everything. That's part of the promotion. You paying me to advertise for you.
Yeah.
And talk to people and say, here, go to this place for bank, uh, for parties and stuff, for little dinnings and everything. You paying me to go out and go forth and do a service. I'll pay, see, I could, we'll wanna pay for that service.
Well, maybe do that, for that advertising.
They don't advertise. I could tell the Goff curse. We could always do better all by us. I see, gotta advertise. It's a word of mouth too.
What do you say?
Well, we can afford ya, in this, well, sorry, I can give you my knowledge. I'm not gonna do it for free anymore. Too many people will give too much information. They wanna use it against you, then you say, we don't need you no more. Yeah, it's a doggy dog out there. People don't realize. They could, say, you hire me and say, okay, my business is going off, I don't need you, John.
Yeah.
You got enough of my knowledge. And, yeah. And I did all that time and effort for you, but you, oh, I got enough of this, I don't need you no more. Yeah, yeah. Sorry. I, I would leave before that. I said, I'm not gonna tell you my secrets no more. And, and, like I said, they'll tell you the basics in books, and you gotta go out there on your own. I know. I was not always good with school books or anything, but I picked it up a lot from my knowledge. I could go, that's why I'd be going on inventory and stuff. I picked it up all natural. Only the fifteen sign, stuff that turned three hundred dollars worth of food. You better have an accurate account for the stuff, like ten cases of fries, damn, and thirty cases of tomatoes. And you count, make sure. But they're kinda like, uh, well, you get two strikes. And you're not gonna, I make one, two, three, four, five, two, two, two. And the drivers have to wait. I said, hey, I'm sorry, I'm making sure everything's accurate. Cause they'll come back to me and say, why, you didn't get that product? And you're saying... They try to set you up for that. What they try to do is they'll say, hey, short. And they give, and they go, oh, I'm sorry, they can't do it. They know what they were doing. Well, we're feeling what you think you are, you know, I'm not telling people, but, uh, what feels you like the best, you know? What you think you're going to want to do. It's a hard field. It's not really a hard field, but there's so much, uh, people want to take their knowledge, they wanna use it for nothing. And you know what? They won't do it. Cause they need you that badly, they'll give you your price. Cause you helping them out. They need you to help them out. And I said the same thing, it's all word of mouth, plus how many people in the business I know.
You're the job of twenty-two.
There you go. Be a full-time student. There you go. That's the best way to do it. See, I have a message in my side. They wanna buy us fifteen. No, no, they're not gonna be having a lot. There you go, there's... Mm-hmm. See, I tried to get a lot. Uh? Well, I don't wanna have a brain, I don't have it outside. All right. I wish you could jump the email here. Can I work, huh?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah?
I can.
No, they don't like that too much. At the Goff curse.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. It's in the bright room. Twenty-three years. Yeah, twenty-three years. You know, my boat of fun. Lost.
Oh, God, that's kinda scary.
He's pretty cool. I know, I saw, that was, uh, I'm having a college all week for, uh...
Oh, yeah. So cute.
This. It's camo phone.
Oh, I see.